First order of business is our invocation led by City Manager Andrew Pazmat. Please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Father, you are most holy and merciful. Teach us to love as you have loved us and teach us to serve our fellow man and do good to all. Direct our steps so that we do according to your will and not our own. Instruct us in forgiveness as you forgive us our shortcomings. Bless those that cry out for your tender mercies and those in distress and strengthen them with your Holy Spirit. May all come to know your glory and power and your name forever and ever. Amen.
Please join with me in our pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, roll call.
Mayor, Chairman Hereford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, Vice Chairman Tui.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
We did not have a closed session tonight. It was canceled, so we don't have anything to report out. Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have no changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we have a couple of presentations for our photo contest, which we've been having monthly. I'd like to call forward Lindell Morgan from the Community Services Department.
Thank you, Mayor Hereford. The city has conducted a photography contest this year, and each month, we've had a different content, a different theme. And tonight, we're here to present the October and November, so I'd like to call the October winners up. It would be Craig Hoffman and Rebecca Lisberg. Is Craig here? I'm not sure Craig was able to make it. As you can see, the theme for October is nature. Come this way. I'm sorry. And the theme is nature, and Rebecca submitted hers that you can see here. And I think we had about 12, 12 different photographs that she was chosen from, so... Rebecca, on behalf of the city and City Council, I'd like to present you this award. Give her a hand, folks. Okay, the theme for November was, is small things and staying in the family is Allison Lisberg here for the youth. And Colleen Reimer, is Colleen here? Well, you can see, this is a nature family, I think. They take a lot of, a lot of outdoor... Oh, great, Colleen is here, super. So, on behalf... Congratulations. So if you have photographers, if you're photographers yourself, they could be professional or amateur, and you can submit them online through the city website. Go to the Community Services webpage, and it'll direct you right to it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lindell. Next item on the agenda is Oral Communications. This is the time for the public to address the City Council. I will call your name, please come forward. We allot five minutes per speaker, and you can speak on items on the agenda or off the agenda, within the purview of the City Council. First person to speak is the Cell Tower Committee of Fung, Vinzer, Torres, and Lopez, and then on deck will be Herb Reddolds.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The matter we are here tonight to discuss is regarding the cell tower project, and I believe Mr. Tui exits the room when cell towers are discussed. We are here tonight as the committee of the cell towers to address Mayor Hereford's letter. Does he stay in, or do you leave, Mr. ...?
Oral Communications, it's, the law's different.
Very well. We are here tonight as a committee of the cell towers to address Mayor Hereford, who sent and signed a letter to the residents concerning the cell tower dated December 16th. On the last paragraph of your letter, you wrote, and I quote, "Although a group, a group opposed to cell towers in general misled some residents on this issue," end of quote. Mayor Hereford, what group are you speaking of that misled the residents?
Well, there were some people that were saying that we didn't support, we weren't in opposition to the cell tower.
Because the only group that...
I'm not speaking of you, because you and I spoke ahead of time.
But, you know, we were the only group out there that was...
Oh, no, there were others.
Oh, were there? Okay, well, we, when we, we felt that this letter was very offensive.
Oh, it wasn't meant to be.
Mm-hmm. Well, we, we are asking that you send a retraction letter to the residents who received your letter, because we've gotten many calls from residents very offended by that last paragraph.
Okay.
We would appreciate that. Will that be done? A retraction letter?
I'll consider it, but I, I think mine was pretty clear in what I said. There were some people that were misleading the public.
Well, I'd like to say that I'm not sure what, how misleading, when we never got, me personally, never got a response from anybody. I sent out a letter, I made phone calls, I couldn't even meet with the mayor at the time, so either you take a stand on something, or you don't. So I don't understand how you can say that it was misleading.
Well, the City Council never, the City Council never gave...
The residents wanted to know, wanted to know from the City Council if they were gonna, what, if they were gonna support or not the community, and there was no stand. There was only one, at one point, the same person that said, that stated that they had a voice was the, the same person that said at one point that they couldn't speak about the issue. And I think I'm clear about who I'm speaking about. The other members refused to meet with us, never gave us an answer, never responded to any of the correspondence that we send out, emails or letters. So, this is just some of the people that are here. There's obviously other people that are upset about this letter as well, because at no point did we attack anyone, did we offend anyone.
Mislead anyone.
Mislead anyone, but we weren't gonna, about, we weren't about to lie on behalf of the City Council when we couldn't get a response. When people wanted to know what was the response of the City Council, our response was none. We have no response.
Okay.
When you try to make an appointment to see the mayor and they have personal issues...
Blocker, didn't, didn't I speak to you? I think others did too.
That was on the, okay, and that's fine, that was on, that was a phone conversation, and that would not make me, or the group, or the residents feel confident enough that we were gonna get a clear vote on it. So that's how we felt. I, I appreciated the, the phone call.
You, you called and thanked me for my position, so that was...
Yes, yes, but that, that was for you. I was not sure on anybody else.
Okay, well, the letter's from me, so it's not from anybody else.
So, once again, are you gonna identify the group, or, you know? Because the only thing that we can say...
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna call the people out, but there were people out there misstating the position of the City Council, and I thought I needed to be clear. Because there, let's just get to the truth of it. The council never supported the cell tower there.
And how were we supposed to know that?
Well, every action that came before us, we didn't approve it. It, we, when it came, you know, let's, let's talk about the process. It, it was approved by the Planning Commission at first, then appealed to the City Council. The, the owner of the property appealed it. He pulled the appeal at the last minute. Had we not sent it back to the, the Planning Commission for action, it would have remained approved. So we've sent it back to the Planning Commission, they changed their vote, they denied it. It came back to the City Council, and the applicant pulled their, their approval, or their, their cell tower proposal.
And why wasn't it denied at the time when it was in your hands to deny it? If you support it, if you weren't in support of it, why wasn't it denied?
Well, we couldn't hear it, because the, the person who appealed it pulled the appeal. Had we not done anything, had we not sent it back to the Planning Commission, it would have been approved procedurally. So what we did was actually the step to deny it.
Yeah, I don't think you understand the process, and I did not vote and participate in it.
I, I understand the process, but we were never told any, any, in any way, shape or form until steps were taken that there was anyone in support or not in support of that. Any member of the City Council, any member.
But you had, you had the right, for one, they can't predetermine their vote. That's against state law, so you need to understand, they can't...
That's not, that's not my understanding. And my understanding...
Well, it is.
There was someone that did say, state what they, what they felt, what their vote was gonna be.
If you let me finish, number two, the residents did not appeal it. The property owner who signed the lease appealed it. The residents had the same right. They did not. I'm making sure you understand what legally took place.
I understand that, I understand that.
Okay, so I'm saying, so we can't hear an item when the person that appealed the item pulls the item, you can't go ahead and hear it. That's against state law once again, because the person that appealed it...
We're questioning something very simple here. That letter was not really clear what group we were talking about. Some people got offended, because we don't know who is being addressed to.
Well, I'll make it clear, it wasn't you, and, and I don't, I don't even know who the group is, so...
Well, we would appreciate it, and we will, every single member can be present here if you will send out another, another letter clarifying that it wasn't the committee that was opposing that. Thank you. You also said that...
Mr. Mayor, the speaker's time has elapsed. I know there's debate going back and forth, but... All right, I'll send another letter saying it wasn't the committee.
May I just close with this, please?
Sure.
I would like to read a quote from Eleanor Roosevelt, who describes a public servant's duty. "A politician interested only in his own personal advancement is not only useless as a public servant, but he will eventually fail. The basic success of any politician lies in his ability to make his own interests those of his constituents, so that he merges into the community in which he serves. Then and then only can he accomplish what he wishes to do," end of quote. Thank you very much. Mr. Hereford?
Yeah, Councilwoman Sanderson.
Thank you, I just wanted to briefly say, I did speak to you on the phone as well, and I apologize. I never refuse to meet with anybody. I got called the same day you guys wanted to meet with me, and I had a sick son at home, and I really greatly apologize. I think this council does care about your, your issues, and, and we are here to, to serve you, and, and I want to make sure you knew that, that I would, you know, I did speak to you, and I told you that I would always listen to the people, and I'm glad it worked out, you know, for everybody, well. So, you know, apologize for any misunderstanding. I want to make sure you knew I didn't refuse to meet with anybody. It was a, it was a last minute, can I meet with you today? I went, oh, my son's sick.
And then I said, help out tomorrow, that's correct.
Yeah.
And we had another person.
And then we talked over the phone, right.
So, had to converse on the phone, we would have loved to, as a mayor...
Absolutely, I would have loved to meet with you.
It's when, sat and talked to you face to face.
Absolutely, but I apologize, I had, my son was sick, and, and I'm his caregiver, so I apologize for that.
So, Mr. Hereford, are we, Mayor Hereford?
Mr. Mayor, the speaker's time has elapsed. Well, we're naming your committee, and I'll make sure that that wasn't, that I'll make it clear in a letter. What's your committee's name?
The, with the cell tower committee.
Well, it should actually go out to everyone that received your first letter.
It will, it will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members.
We just want the truth. Okay, Herb Reddolds.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you and all the council members and staff and everybody here. I want to first of all thank you for your consideration of my application for the vacant position. I stand before you as an announced candidate who is running in November. No matter what, I have some supporters here that would like to see me appointed, and they plan to vote for me in November. Now, my second item, for the last couple of meetings, I've sat here in the audience, and I've listened to several residents, fine, well-minded people, come up here to sing the praises of Fred Sykes, another individual who has applied, which is fine, that's their opinion, and they're certainly entitled to it, and they have every right to express their opinion. Some of them have gotten up here and said that Mr. Sykes comes around to their neighborhood and informs them of what's happening with the City Council and the city. He keeps them informed. Well, I gotta tell you, if, if Mr. Sykes is your source for information in this city, God help you. You are being lied to, you're being misled, you're being manipulated, you're being deceived, you're being bamboozled for his own good, his own political good. A flyer was recently mailed out to the residents, either from Mr. Sykes or on his behalf, that said that the four of you, whom he refers to as the gang of four, were under investigation by some governmental body. Turned out, of course, to be untrue, again, another misleading lie. Coincidentally, that letter, that flyer endorsed Mr. Sykes for the vacant council position. Now, after several years of coming up here and calling you all corrupt, crooks, on the take, criminals, god knows what, now he wants to sit in that seat and be your colleague. Well, you know, after, gosh, after all these years of accusing you of not being transparent and everything else, the funny thing is, the ironic thing is, that his campaign committees, they're the ones that got in trouble for using the LA County seal without permission. His committee concerned citizens, or a better West Covina, I think it is, which is chair, his treasurer is his wife, Dana Sykes, they were fined thousands of dollars by the Fair Political Practices Commission for irregularities with their paperwork. So what's going on here? You tell me. The other thing that concerns me greatly, the same nice people got up here and said that the people want Fred Sykes to represent them. They want Fred Sykes on the City Council. You have to listen to the people, the people want Fred Sykes. Well, I gotta differ with you. Mr. Sykes is no mystery man to the West Covina voter. He has been a candidate on two separate occasions. The West Covina voter has said no both times to Mr. Sykes. They have spoken. In one of those elections, there were three seats available, meaning you can come in third and still win. He couldn't do that. So they know who he is. They've had an opportunity to elect him fairly to the City Council, they've decided not to. They also know what he stands for and what he wants to do for the city. His signature idea, his signature piece was Measure D, which was on the ballot last November, which sought to divide the city into council districts, thus making it impossible for you to vote for 80% of the City Council. Well, thank God, the West Covina voter saw through that and rejected it by a, more than a two-to-one margin. They said no. So they've had the opportunity to weigh in on Mr. Sykes as a candidate and to weigh in on his signature piece, and they have said no, no, no. Well, I ask you tonight, he's always saying you need to listen to the people, well, the people have spoken on him and his ideas, and they've said no, and I would urge this council, in your wisdom, to go along with the people and also say no to Mr. Sykes. There are better choices to make for that seat. It's too important, it's too critical, you need to be able to work with an individual to get things done, to keep this city moving forward. This city has not gotten into some of the other critical issues that other cities have gotten into because of the leadership of the elected officials and of the staff. They've kept this city on the right track, it needs to keep going in that direction, and I urge you to keep it going that way by making the right decision tonight. Thank you.
Cookie Nance. On deck is Deanne Castavea, Castavena.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Hereford. Our last meeting, I felt, was hijacked by Mr. Sykes, the people that were here to speak. He was politicking up there and brought him, herd, like a herd of cattle back down here, vote for me type, and these people have not a clue what this man has done. He has shot a dog who was in a cage with his gun. He has shot, fired off his weapon, god only knows where the bullet went, and we want someone like this sitting in the seat? I don't think so. That's all I need to say, thank you.
Okay, Deanne Castavena, and on deck, Erin Bundah.
Good evening, Mayor Hereford.
Oh, hi.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, esteemed board members, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. My name is Deanne Castarina. I've been a resident in the city of West Covina since 1996. I bought my first house on the east side of the, on the city, on the, sorry, on the west side of the city, now I live on the east side of the city. I'm a deputy district attorney, and I've been working that capacity for 20 years. For five of those years, I was assigned to the West Covina courthouse and worked closely with the police department in this city and many community members who were victims in this city. And tonight, I'd like to say a few words in support of Karen Armbrust and her application to fill the vacant seat. I actually first met Karen's husband Carl when he was a witness to a crime and testified in that courtroom, and over the years, I got close to their family. I've spent holidays in their home, I've been on vacation with them, our children are close friends, and I've seen the integrity that Karen has, the honesty that she has, and the tenacity that she has. I've known her for six or seven years now, her close-knit family, her parents and her brother, sister-in-law, and their children, all live in the city of West Covina, and she's very dedicated to this city. They support one another in her family, and they support the community. Karen and Carl have both coached local teams in AYSO soccer, in Little League. She's been a team mom together with me on the West Covina American Little League organization, PTA president over at Mesa School. She's a dedicated parent, and she's dedicated to all the youth in our community. She's concerned about preserving the open spaces in parks in our community, and what she really wants to do, her priority, is to protect the health and safety of all of the residents of West Covina. She grew up with this concern, because her father was a sheriff, very well and highly respected deputy in the Sheriff's Department, and retired from there several years ago. In my capacity, seeking special projects throughout the county of Los Angeles in the last 20 years, I've worked with the Bellflower City Council, Monrovia City Council, Pasadena City Council, Hawaiian Gardens City Council. I've been involved in both closed door meetings, giving presentations, giving presentations to bodies such as yourself, and to the community at town hall meetings. I've seen the importance of working together and not working in strife against one another. And I believe Karen Armbrust would be a very good fit. She will speak her piece when she disagrees with you, but she will never be disrespectful. She will work with the members of this community and this committee to move our city forward. She is dedicated to that in which she believes. She is tenacious and will not give up until she finds an answer or solve a problem. I think she will be an excellent addition to this City Council, and I hope you agree with me. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Erin Bundah, and on deck is Cynthia Woods.
Good evening, my name is Erin Bundah, and I'm here to show my support for Karen Armbrust to fill in the vacant seat for City Council. My family owns several properties here in West Covina. My parents grew up here, and I, I myself live just a block away from the border of West Covina, and we, my family and I, we do all sorts of things in West Covina, such as shopping and other things. So we have a very strong interest in the well-being of the city. Now, as you can see, I'm not of voting age yet, but politics and the well-being of cities is something that I'm very passionate about. I represent Generation Joshua, a national group organization which supports conservative candidates such as Karen Armbrust. Karen Armbrust will, is committed to the values that have made America and communities across America great, such as limited government, fiscal responsibility, cracking down on crime, traditional family values, and more. Also, having known Ms. Karen for as long as I can remember, I can personally say that she will be, that she is a perfect example of what a good neighbor should be, and that is what I believe should be a good leader, a good neighbor, because she is committed to the people and what the people need, and she will reflect those values and those people if she is, is appointed City Council member. So, in summary, Ms. Karen Armbrust will be a good neighbor, a good leader, will be committed to the strong values that will make West Covina great. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Woods, and on deck is Frank Williams.
Good evening, Mayor Hereford. Good evening, council members. My name is Cynthia Woods, and I have been a member, or actually, a resident of West Covina for 16 years. My husband and my family are here tonight in support for Karen Armbrust. I've gotten to know Karen, I've known her probably for about six years now. Our children went to school together, that's where I first met her, and seeing her in the school environment, school setting, she is very committed. When something needed done, you went to Karen to get it done. I saw her work with the principal, the students, the teachers, and she's always someone that you could count on. She did her job with integrity. Then when a position became available for student council president, she stepped up and ran for president, became president, and did a fabulous job. She did her job with integrity, and she, she was committed, and she also has a spirit of excellence. When she does something, it's with a spirit of excellence. She did her best for our school, our teachers, our staff, and just like she did her best for our school, I see her doing the best for West Covina residents. And she's a team player. I heard someone else mention that tonight, and that's something I see her do, is she's a part of a team, she's just not a, a stand-up-alone gal. I feel Karen will step up and get things done for our community, and she'll work with her fellow council members, and just as, I saw her look out for the best interest of all of the, the people at our school. I feel she'll do the same for our community and our city, and I know she'll do an excellent job, and she has the full support of myself and my husband and my children, so I hope you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Williams, on deck, Gloria Galardo.
Good evening, council, mayor. I love coming up here, because I get a chance to be heard. I think that's just an awesome right. I'm, as you know, I've been here before, I'm a father of five, resident for almost 20 years. You know, I always talk about having such a wonderful time and proud that I moved to this city because of all the things that have happened here. One of the things that I'm really proud of is that I'm an, I'm a registered voter that actually votes. I'm actually one of the, the several thousand that actually goes out and, and exercises my right, and I'm very proud of that. And I'm also very proud that I voted against measure divide. I thought that was really impressive a year ago, that we, as a city, stood in the face of people trying to rip us apart, and came up and, you know, overwhelmingly stood together, and we, we passed, we passed the, we passed it by declining the fact that we were gonna be divided, and that was very important, because now we have an opportunity. And, and also, one of the reasons why I'm coming here, and I, I kinda wrote stuff down so I don't go over my five minutes, but I, I wanna really emphasize the, the, the amount of appreciation that I have for our leadership, as yourselves, that have been out there, because you always do things in a positive way, and I'm really upset with the amount of negativity that is just completely and consistently slamming us. I'm a resident, my family, I mean, things are tough enough already as it is, and to sit down and, you know, after 12-day, 12-hour day of work, working and doing what I have to do to survive and take care, keep my kids in college, and to have to sit there and listen to the amount of negative, negativity that is thriving on all the things like, where are you from? You know, it's almost like a gang, you know, where are you from? You know, what part of West Covina are you from? Doesn't matter where we're from. We're from West Covina. I don't say I'm from Fair Grove and Azusa, or I'm from, you know, you know, Cortez and Citrus, or, you know, it doesn't matter where we're from, we're all from West Covina, and that's what I appreciate, all the wonderful projects that we've done in this city, regardless the size of our city, is that we are from the city of West Covina, and that's what we need to say. So I challenge the citizens, when they're being interviewed, they should just say, I'm proud to be a West Covina citizen, and that's really what really matters. And what happens is that I sit back and I listen, I won't mention, you know, any names, but their initials are the San Gabriel Valley Tribune, and anybody that they interview. So I am really fed up with the amount of negativity that is spewing, when we should look at the prop, the, the positive things that are going on, that is going on in our city. Um... I mean, we have police officers willing to not get paid for overtime, so that way they can react at our most extreme moments, at a moment's call. Those are the type of things that make me proud to be a resident of West Covina. And I'm sorry, I get up here, I get emotional, I don't want to start yelling and stuff because I, you know, get all... But I sit back and sit there and think about it, you know, united we stand. I came up here about a year ago, and I was really proud that that was what we, as citizens, came out. We did that by, with our vote. I'm one of the few several thousand people that actually came up and said that. So beyond a shadow of a doubt, I can tell you that I'm proud to be a citizen of West Covina, and that we should only, only choose somebody to fill that seat that's going to do that. That it doesn't matter what neighborhood we're from. We shouldn't even have that in our, in our, in our speak, in our, in our common dialogue. It shouldn't even be an issue. We are a resident of West Covina, and whatever happens, on whatever part, doesn't matter. We are a resident of West Covina. So I know I've said that, I'm getting harping up. I'm really upset about the constant banging against the head that I keep feeling. But I challenge the Tribune to promote all the positives. I challenge our citizens and our residents of West Covina to state the obvious, that we are citizens of West Covina, and it doesn't matter what street or what neighborhood you live in, or whatever, it doesn't matter. You guys have demonstrated, day in and day out, you have to, you have to make difficult decisions, but that we are a better city because of the decisions that you've made overall. And I want to go back to the challenge of what we need to promote. And we need to promote the volunteers that go on in the city of West Covina. I sit there and talk about roles.
Mr. Mayor, speaker, speak. This is the five minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll wrap up with this last one statement. We are looking at roles as we are leading by example. We volunteer our time, like, you know, in our football program at the West Covina Bruins at Cortez Park, all the things that are going on. And like I said, we're always looking at the positive, and that's what I really want to emphasize, is that we stay focused on the positive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gloria Galardo, and on deck Lawrence Velo.
Good evening, Mayor Hurford, council members. I'd like to take a few minutes of your time to introduce myself. My name is Gloria Galardo, and I'm an applicant for the Human Resources Commission. You should have my application before you, which highlights my education and background. But more importantly, I want you to know that West Covina is my home. I've been a resident since 1987, so I have a vested interest in the continued success of this city, and I would be honored to utilize my knowledge, skills, and abilities in the furtherance of the commission's objectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Lawrence Velo, and on deck Alfred Williams.
My name is Lawrence Velo, and I'm a 17-year citizen of West Covina. According to the San Gabriel Valley Tribune, a special election for the next city council seat will cost roughly $125,000. I'd like to know that it's important to save taxpayers' dollars. It would be financially convenient and ethical to allow citizens' voices and votes, since our nation functions through a democratic process. The choice in my favor would be Frederick Sykes. The opposition of Measure D has a phrase, "Don't divide, West Covina." Well, that's misleading. Los Angeles has districts, but it's still a city united. I'd like the beautification of West Covina to reach my neighborhood. That's why I'm endorsing Frederick Sykes. I would like representative to be a different voice and offer the democratic process that our city should follow. I sometimes wonder why certain parts of West Covina have more elegant street lamps or different parts. I just like equality and fairness. Thank you, and I yield the rest of the time to the chair.
Thank you. Alfred Williams.
On deck, Gary Gerlach. Evening, council. Mayor Hurford, Mr. Tuohy, Mrs. Lang, Mr. Sanderson. I'm a 30-some-year resident of West Covina. And just before I get into it, I really want to talk about, there was something brought up about Mrs. Ambrose running for the office. But if we listen to the logic of some of the people who got up here, they said if you run for office before and the voters rejected you, then you're not a viable candidate. Mrs. Ambrose ran for office. Tonight, I assume that this council will select a replacement for the position held by Mr. Hernandez. It's my hope tonight that this council will do this with a commitment to fairness. But I must point out that the process started out with a false sense of fairness. The reason I say this is because the council, at adequate time, knowing that Mr. Hernandez would probably win, to devise a fair process for a selection of candidates, but chose not to do so. So let's look at some of the problems. The first problem, on December 7th, this council said, "Let's take application for this position." Problem. They gave no directions for notifying the public. I don't know how it got in the Tribune, but it got there. But the staff wasn't directed to do that. They said, "Let's give them seven days." Well, they actually only had four days. This was done starting Wednesday. This city clerk's office was closed on Friday. We don't do anything on Saturday and Sunday, so that left us Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, Tuesday. So, we didn't have adequate notice, and the time was not seven days, it was four. Applicants are required to fill out an application, but no directions or information is required on that application, other than a name. So since we don't have a process, we don't have a way of objectively selecting a candidate, all you need to do is sign your name. So that makes you qualify, I guess. The other problem, the city clerk collected these names only. And in our minutes tonight, it said that they're coming forward with recommendations. And I know what recommendations you can give, but all a person has to do is sign his name. It doesn't even have to be, it doesn't even say, "Yeah, I got to be a citizen of West Covina." All you got to do is sign your name and come up here and say, "I want to be on this council." It leads to a system that is very subjective, shows favoritism, cronyism, and is hypocrisy to the citizens of West Covina to not have a process that you can objectively select a candidate. Mr. Hurford has already indicated that he doesn't want anyone on the council who wants to divide the city. My interpretation of that, Mr. Sykes. He doesn't want anybody who is negative. My interpretation of that, if you disagree with me, forget being on this council, Mr. Sykes. Mr. Tuohy, I just want you to know something. It doesn't necessarily mean that you will get in, you will get what you want, just because you pray for it. And you don't always get what you want. Interpretation. If you disagree with me, forget it. You're not going to be on this council. Mrs. Sanderson, Mrs. Lang, it's not that we don't want, we don't have our own opinion, it's just that we have a common interest in what is best for this city. My interpretation, I'll vote along with those guys. So it comes down to a false masquerade to the residents of a fair process to select and elect a new replacement for Mr. Hernandez's position. This position is based upon subjectivity, as far as I'm concerned, buddy-ism, I created that new word because I couldn't think of anything else, and favoritism. Not on qualifications, because we stated no qualifications. We gave the staff no recommendation for qualification. We didn't do anything to make sure that we got qualified individuals, except for knowing how to sign their name. So fairness, qualifications, where are they? Residents of West Covina, beware. We may be creating a new bail. Thank you.
Thank you. I respectfully disagree with everything you said. Gary Gerlach, on deck is Robert Walker.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, council. I agree with Frank, actually. I'm going to try and focus on the positive here, so I'm going to focus on this piece of paper. So my positive is basically to talk about Karen Armbrust. My name is Gary Gerlach. I'm a lifelong resident of West Covina, 40 years, born and raised here. I am in support of Karen's appointment to city council, and I'll tell you why. As children, Karen and I both enjoyed the perks of living in this city in regards to the schools, the parks, the sports, and just the overall security and living in a proactive, safe city. As adults, we are raising our children, and we choose to do so in West Covina, and we have an innate desire to provide to them the same quality of life that we ourselves enjoyed as lifelong residents of this city. The motivation for our community involvement is simple, and that's giving back. Karen is an honest, hard-working individual with a strong desire to give back to this city. I can obviously attest to her upbringing, and I assure you that she is motivated to work hard for the city. Karen has not only believes in individual responsibility and moral character, but she does her best to live it every day, does her best to walk the walk. She's a true leader who strives for the success of the team and not solely for individual accomplishments. I, myself, am a retired sheriff's deputy, and I've seen communities benefit as they work together for a greater good, and I've seen them torn apart by a lack of concern by either the citizens or the city leaders, and sometimes both. I believe that in these tough times, we need a cohesive team mentality. We may not always agree with everything we encounter, we try and stay positive, but if our goal is for the success of this team, then we stand the best chance of making things right and making the right decisions with that in mind. A true leader does not divide a team. They unite, and they develop, and, most importantly, they lead. This is not a time to divide up our community for individual benefit, and I know that Karen believes in the team concept, and I know that as an individual, she's a valuable asset to any team, and I believe she will be to you. Karen believes in the city of West Covina and all of our neighbors, and she believes that all of our neighbors are instrumental, are instrumental to the success of our community and our city of West Covina. I believe that Karen will be a valuable member of this great team. And lastly, I'd like to appreciate, I'd like to tell you guys how much I appreciate being here and have this opportunity to do so. So thank you, and thanks for the hard work.
Thank you. Robert Walker, and on deck is Frederick Sykes.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, pardon me, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, I can't. I'm deaf in the left ear. Tomorrow, the doctor will take care of that. And I can't tell you how much I look forward to tomorrow. So, reading the San Gabriel Valley Tribune, I understand that there are 19 applicants for the vacant position on the city council. If I may indulge the council and those present here tonight, or if the prospective applicants will indulge me, those who are present tonight, would you stand for me? My family moved to West Covina 60 years ago. I remember the day we looked at the property, and my dad bought it on the spot. I've seen this city change over 60 years. I love this city. It's gone through enormous differences. When I was a boy, it was Orange Grove and Field. Now, it's a city of 110,000 to 120,000, with disparate needs, an enormously varied population, but one that I believe is united in terms of what we see to be best for our community. I'm a businessman, but that was not always so. Once upon a time, I worked as a political professional. And the image of you people standing, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't have a hat, but if I had one, I would take it off to every one of you. I know the sacrifice that's involved in running for office.
Mr. Walker, could you please talk into the mic, because this is being recorded?
All right. Thank you. I'm sure I don't agree with all of you. I know I disagree with some of you. But stating that disagreement, I respect you. It takes an enormous dedication, whatever your point of view, to do what you folks are doing. And I salute that. As council members, you've already been accused of being subjective, and ironically, the gentleman accusing you of that, which was two speakers ago, accused you of not instructing the application process. And I'm guessing had you instructed that process, you would have been accused of applying that subjectivity at the time. I salute you for making the process open, and we have 19 people who have responded. Each of you has a choice. If I were sitting in your place, I would have a choice as well. I understand that when we apply our choices, we bring our own agenda to the table. That's part of the program. That being said, I know if I were making the choice, I would make my own particular vote. But that's applying my own agenda and bringing that to the table. That being said, I would offer to you, and I'm persuaded that there is one measure that you should consider, and I hope you will, at least three of these candidates faced up against each other in a previous election. Paradoxically, that election was for the vacated member, Mr. Hernandez. The voters themselves have had an opportunity to look at least at three of these applicants, and in looking at them and comparing them, those voters gave the majority of their votes or the bulk of their votes to Karen Armbrust. I believe in the ballot box. I believe in the elective process. Having instructed political science at the college level, I've told my students, "Trust the people." I'm asking the council here tonight to look at those, at the results of that given election and to trust the people. Now, I will admit my prejudice for Karen Armbrust. She is my neighbor. I worked for her in that election. I know the worth of this individual. And by the way, I don't always agree with Karen. Who agrees with another individual 100% of the time? But having said that, I can tell you this about Karen. She is independent, she is her own person. She is as honest an individual as I have ever met. I've seen her working in our community, I've seen her working with her family...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, speaker, seat at five minutes.
And the crucible of a tough campaign. I hope you'll consider her application positively. Thank you all, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you. Frederick Sykes on deck, John Schumaker.
Good evening, council. Good evening, members of the staff. Good evening, members of the audience. There have been quite a few lies told tonight. And one of them is Ms. Armbrust did not get 4,000 votes, so she did not get the most votes out of the people, and I'm assuming they were also talked about, so tell her and myself. I am the Frederick Sykes that everybody's talking about, that supposedly did harm to a helpless animal. So let me address that real quick, because that's, that's really a sad situation. My neighbor lives behind me, had a pit bull, full-grown, and the neighbor, I observed him in the, in the community, and he did not have control of the dog. The dog had control of him. At the time, I heard the disturbance in the backyard, I asked the neighbor, I shouted to him, "Do you need some help?" And I won't tell you his name, but I did shout, and there are reports to that effect. He said yes. Finally, he said yes, because he's almost out of breath. Because I knew that there was an out-of-control pit bull in that yard, I rushed to the scene to help. I brought my firearm, I'm a deputy sheriff. I was a deputy sheriff for 33 years. I'm a retired deputy sheriff at this time. And I brought a shovel. And as I entered the rear yard, I saw that the, he had a black Labrador that this pit bull had ripped to pieces, and the neighbor was bleeding profusely. Both hands were ripped, his tendons appeared to be somewhat out of use, and the dog was in control of the situation. In order to stop from more mayhem being committed to the neighbor, I did use deadly force to, enough force to stop the dog. And the reason why I tell you this is for everybody to understand... And the reason why I tell you this is for everybody to understand that, yes, believe what people say, but verify. That is very important. And there have been a lot of lies told here tonight, and it's unfortunate that we don't, as a people, we don't verify things before we start spreading rumors. Now, I'm hoping that the staff can give me a few more minutes. What I wanted to address is the towers first, because last week, due to protocol and a change of events, a number of people were not allowed to speak. And the bottom line is, in our city, we have a proliferation of the cell phone towers, and I don't think anyone here that carries a cell phone is against cell phone towers. But we are against a pin cushion attack on our most precious commodity, and that's our homes. And so, the residents brought those homes with the expectation to enjoy it, what they paid for. And unfortunately, we have these cell phone towers that are being installed without the express will of the people. And although we have a lot of people saying that nothing can be done, that's not true. All you need to do is look next door to Covina. That city council has addressed the issue to help mitigate situation for the people. So that's all I'm going to say about the cell phone towers. You have it on record that I've asked for a moratorium. Covina did that. I've asked for scientists to get involved. Covina did that. And I've asked for a master plan, and it won't hurt us. It will help us, give us a guide on where to place these items and how many we need so that we do not further impinge on the, and diminish the value of our property and the quality of our city. Now, as far as filling the vacancy, I want to thank everyone that came out away from their homes to get involved. I want to thank those who got involved and supported me. And so far, this council has decided to ignore the four thousand votes. They've also decided to go forward with this charade, and they have the power to appoint, but I hope that they also remember that there are other obligations, such as vicarious liability, fiduciary responsibility, and the residents in law are simply saying that they want them to give considerable thought to matters such as character, reputation, intellect.
Excuse us, Mayor. Speaker, a seat of their five minutes.
May I have a few more minutes, please?
No, you can wrap it up.
Okay, thank you. I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm almost done. And thank you, sir. Does your selection have a strong work ethic? Have they continuously been involved with the local government? What have they done for the community? How have they prepared to be on the city council? And finally, please consider that if your selection is below the standard that is becoming of a city council member, then you risk degrading yourselves, degrading the office you represent, and you will certainly not be doing your best as a representative for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. John Schumaker on deck, Gordon Mize.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here, and I'll just start off up front to support Herb Redholtz. When everybody talks about qualifications, the one thing that I've got to say is he has the qualifications. I met him probably eighteen years ago or so, when other councils and only one, I think the only person who was really trying to close BKK at the time was Mayor Herford. You weren't on the city council yet.
My brother read props. Eighty-four, I'm here.
You know, so, but Herb Redholtz was there, working to try to close BKK. Once BKK finally got closed, you know, Herb was there on the different ways to develop that area, whether it was Big League Dreams, whether it was golf course, whether it was the current shopping. Herb Redholtz was there, helping where he could in the city, getting support and giving an opinion. When the cities run into budget issues, Herb Redholtz has been here saying how he would approach things, how he would go about doing things. He understands the city. One of the great things about Herb is, you know, when you sit down and look at it, is what has made this city better than the cities around us? And I think it's because the members of the council have been involved in our city for many, many years, before they were on the city council, during their time on the city council, even after the time. I think they understood what a lot of us could refer to in business as the brand. He understood the West Covina brand. Whenever he's disagreed with members of the city council, he's never made it personal. It was policy. Matter of fact, some people who have been on this council, who he publicly disagreed with, are supporting him to be on the council, which is unique in itself, that people he's challenged publicly because of the way he did it, the way he gave his opinion, the approach, and the process, showed somebody who, "I can disagree with you, but I don't necessarily have to be disagreeable," that we have a difference in policy, not in whether we like each other or not, but what's best for the city. And that's the way he's taken his entire career working in the city of West Covina. I was thinking about it one time. I think Herb Redholtz has attended more city council meetings, more planning commission meetings, than the people who are on those commissions themselves over the years. I think maybe the only person who attended more, because he's been here longer, has been Royal Brown. But one of the things, you continually go through every major issue in the city. When there was an attempt to close down the gym, Herb was up front saying, "This is the cost to the city, not only monetarily, but what it's going to do to the residents." And most importantly, most importantly, during budget issues, here's where you had to take things. The one thing that impresses me the most about Herb, and I'm not easily impressed by people, is that you walk through City Hall with him, everybody knows him. There's not a learning curve. Nobody in the city government and staff is going to have to go, "Well, when he asks for this, what does he mean? What does he really want?" They know him. He knows them. There's already that built-in trust. He knows what the budget is. He knows what the factors are. The interview that hit the Tribune, he was talking about how it would give a leg up to solve the problems in the city. He was talking about the city. Wasn't talking about the appointment, but how he was going to help the city. And I think what really shows again and again, and you can go through every major issue that's been in the city, if you look back to 2009, when people were trying to divide the city, Herb Redholtz stepped up, stepped up, and said, "No, this isn't right, and I'm going to be the leader for that." And he successfully led, and he's continually shown, I made the remark one time, that Herb has brought people together who wouldn't give each other, couldn't agree on the time of day, but they have agreed on, Measure D was wrong, and they supported Herb in his efforts and working with everybody to get that voted down, and a lot of those same people agree on his candidacy for the city council. And I think you have the opportunity to continue to bring somebody who understands the brand, understands the greatness of West Covina, understands how you go about making it even better without tearing it down. So I hope when you all vote tonight, you look at that long record, his involvement in the community, his knowledge of the community, and the way he has approached every issue with the politeness, the professionalism that you want out of a leader. He has shown for twenty years why he deserves to be on the city council, so I hope that you will appoint him. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Mize on deck, Art Mazmanian.
Boy, am I nervous. Hi, I'm Gordon Mize, and I'm a lifelong resident of West Covina, and I'm here to recommend Karen Armbrust to fill the vacancy of former council member Roger Hernandez. I know Karen through West Covina American Little League, Little League family for the last four years. I think she's an intelligent, capable person, and I think she'd make good, common sense decisions that would benefit everybody in the city, you know, regardless of the geography. She's got experience, I think it's over seven years with the Community Services Commission, and that's good service involvement in my eyes. And also, she's gone through that political fray that everybody's talked about, and I believe in 2007, she trailed the former council member by something around one hundred and seventy-five votes. And I've never run for any office myself, but if I had won and beat somebody by that slight measure, I'd go, you know, pretty close. So anyway, so I think she has the capabilities and the experience, and is kind of been vetted by the voter, and so without hesitation, I would recommend Karen Armbrust to be chosen to fill that vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you. Art Mazmanian on deck, Brian Scrivens.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. I'm here on behalf of Karen Armbrust. I've known her long enough and well enough to know that she would make a wonderful council member. She's caring, she's intelligent, she's hardworking, she's persevering, and she tries to live as godly a life as she can live. Because of, I know the decisions you folks have to make, and you make them every day, I'm reminded of Father Hesberg, who was the president of the University of Notre Dame. He was also head of the Civil Rights Commission. He lived by one principle when it came to decision-making. He said, "You don't make a decision because it's easy. You don't make a decision because it's cheap. You don't make a decision because it's popular. You make a decision because it's right." I'm confident in Karen's ability to make every decision a right decision, because I know the first thing in her mind is to make a decision that will be pleasing to God. And I know that by doing that, every decision she makes will be a right decision. I also know that she cares so much about the people of West Covina, no matter what area of the city they live in. If they have a problem and they bring it to her, she will solve the problem. It may not be the popular decision, but she's going to make a right decision. I think the city of West Covina needs Karen Armbrust. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Scrivens, and on deck, Ray Hernandez.
Mayor Herford, council members. I'm here to support Karen Armbrust for city council. I've known Karen for seven years, and during that time, I've learned she's a very bright and motivated young lady who is not afraid to make the tough decisions. I observed her as she served on the church council at Christ First Baptist where I attend. I noticed that she listens carefully to all the discussions and the facts, and then she makes her decisions based on those facts and what is best for the church, even though it's unpopular sometimes. She is a leader, demonstrated by serving on the church council at Christ First Baptist, but prior to that, she also served on the church council at Christ Lutheran in West Covina. She also was president for two years at Mesa Elementary School in West Covina, a very tough political position. Karen is a positive person, and that is demonstrated by the campaign she ran for in the last city election. Her campaign was based on what she believed, what she had to offer, and why her election would be good for the citizen of West Covina, it was not on the personalities or lesser qualities of other candidates. She's been involved in the community and served the last seven years on this Community Service Commission. I worked on her campaign. I voted for her, and I believe since she received the highest number of votes of those candidates not elected, only common sense said she should be appointed to this opening. As a citizen of West Covina since 1971, I strongly urge you to put her in a position that's vacant. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Hernandez on deck, Rob Satello.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Ray Hernandez, and I'm a twenty-five-year resident of West Covina. The reason I'm here tonight is to address two subject matters, and let me begin with the first one. I want to personally thank Chief Wills. Now, I don't know if he's here tonight. I promise not to embarrass him too much.
He's not here tonight.
And the reason that I bring his name up is my neighbors and I were experiencing a very serious criminal activity in the south side of West Covina where I live, and Chief Wills agreed to meet with us and address the situation. We met as a group, and he was very attentive, listened to us, and what I was impressed with Chief Wills is that I really believed he cared. He cared about our safety, and he was concerned. He spoke with all of us. He set a plan of action for us, and within weeks, this criminal activity was resolved. I want to thank Chief Wills and the police department. We are very, very lucky to have this quality of police department and leadership. And if you see a West Covina Police Department person, say hi. Incidentally, I have been privileged to go on a ride-along several years ago, and Officer Mike Carding is a policeman's policeman. These guys, I don't know how they do it, but I got to tell you, I was ready to go home by midnight, which I did. Second subject is the vacancy in the council here. I'm going to read a couple of bullet points that I feel is the quality and the professionalism and the leadership requirement of this position, if I may, and not limited to. I think the candidate should have a positive attitude, a strong understanding of city government, a vision, integrity, a passion for the job, ability to work and compromise with all council members, and represent the entire city of West Covina, west, south, north, east. I believe these qualities and qualifications exist of Herb Redholtz, and I endorse and recommend that this council appoint this gentleman. I've seen Herb for well over a decade up there, at every council meeting, taking notes. He has earned. He is qualified. He is intelligent. I would like to see him appointed to this vacant council. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Happy New Year.
You too. Happy New Year. Rob Satello, and on deck, Karen Armbrust.
Good evening, council and staff. It's kind of strange standing on the side of the podium right now. My name is Rob Satello, and I'm asking for your appointment to city council for the vacant seat. I've been here for many years. Most of you know me. I've been a commissioner for twenty-some years. I've been working in the city of West Covina through youth groups for many years past that, and also with the high school. I come in front of you tonight to just let you know, I wasn't really expecting to say a speech tonight, but I come to you guys, asking you guys for your consideration. And when it comes to working with staff, and when it comes to working with councils, I've worked with many councils. Through the twenty-plus years as a commissioner of the city of West Covina, I have learned what it takes to work with staff and work with councils. As you know, many different people have appointed me, and many different times you guys had to vote me in, but I've been here for many years for our city of West Covina. I grew up in the north side of West Covina, over by Hollow. I raised my family over by West Covina High School, and now presently, I live over on the east side. I don't think where you live or where you're from makes a difference. I have to agree with some of the fellow speakers, I'm here for all of West Covina. And no matter all the years I've been involved with the city, I've been here for our city and to make it a better place for all of us. It'd be an honor. It'd be a pleasure. It'd be something I think we could do, and I could really work well with our city council here, to make it a better place for West Covina. I appreciate if you give my consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen Armbrust, and our final speaker will be Tom O'Donnell.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I just want to say, I'm very humbled and honored for all of you who had spoke in my behalf. Thank you very much. I also want to say thank you very much to the kids that are sitting in the audience that are here. I know you guys aren't old enough to vote, but I appreciate you guys sitting there and just listening to what's going on, because we're doing this on your behalf. These people here are here for you. So thank you for being here. I know you could be home watching SpongeBob. I just wanted to say, really, the residents have said everything that I would have wanted to say, so I don't want to be redundant, but I would appreciate your consideration, considering my application, and I know I could do a good job representing the city as a whole. So thank you very much. Merry Christmas, and God bless you, and have a Happy New Year.
You too. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name's Thomas J. O'Donnell. You also know me as a mighty Tomo. I first ran across you folks when I had the largest neighborhood watch in the city of West Covina. We covered approximately twelve solid We covered approximately 12 solid blocks around my neighborhood. We graduated six to 12 people and went through the CERT program that was conducted by the West Covina Fire Department. On occasion, I had my first experience with Michael Tuohy in that we had a killing by a church up where I lived. Michael Tuohy was approximately 15 to 20 minutes ahead of that police officer. Michael was there, he settled down the crowd that was around there, assuaged other people's feelings, passions, and what have you. I've been a devotee of Michael Tuohy for some eight to 10 years. I also had on occasion run across Mayor Steve Herford. On this particular occasion, I came to him seeking more help for my neighborhood. He obliged me in any way that he could, instructed me to get in touch with Chief Wills, which was a very exciting and very interesting occasion. Since then, we got some very nice folks coming by to see us on occasion. Later on, I got involved with the West Covina softball crew down at Cameron. Steve came down and told us sometime in the future, we're going to build a thing called the Big League Dreams. You're all going to be invited to come out there and play for free. Average politician comes in and says, "Okay, fine, see you around. Nice seeing you. You come back when you feel better." Well, about six months, seven months before he's going to build it, he came down and says, "Okay, guys, we're ready to go. We need you to come on down and play some ball." There's quite a bit of culture shock going on about that time. For one thing, here's a politician that actually came up, kept his word, and did exactly what he said he was going to do. I, at this particular time, want to thank every one of you in the City Council for supporting us and allowing us to go out there and play. As you know, we take no city funds. We are completely self-sufficient. We are enjoying the hospitality of management at Big League Dreams. We want to tell you how much we are grateful to you. Over the years, I've had occasion and a pleasure to come and work for you folks during election time. I may get a point to come out and pick out the best winners I can find. You happen to be the four best winners that West Covina happens to love a great deal. I want you to know, because I'm your little local sign man, I used to tell you, you were going to win that campaign, but the thing was, I had a little secret you didn't know about. That secret was, every time I hung a sign, the neighbors kept saying, "Don't forget with Sherry out there, don't forget with Shelley out there, and I want to see Mike out there, and I want that Proposition D put down." I wallpaper the city of West Covina because of you. I'm very grateful. I wish you nothing but the best. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we did receive one more speaker. This will be the last one. Armando Sanchez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. My name's Armando Sanchez. I'm a resident of West Covina for the last 18 years, very active in my church, which is in West Covina, down the street from a development that's not doing well, right there on Holt and Grand. I attend the L.A. Church of Christ, where we rent the temple there, right next to the Seventh-day Adventist Church. But what I'm hearing here is, there's a lot of anger with some of the residents, and sure, they can be angered, but the one thing that I know that I was for Prop D, and it's not to divide, because I know in Monterey Park, they have that, they don't divide the city, but they put members from each district in there, and they're voted, just the way we do with our state representatives and our United States congressmen and senators. We build districts. They don't divide. Like the one kid said, is a teenager, "We unified." Yes, we're going to have opinions, but that's what's made this nation's great. We've had opinions on everything, but we work together, and we get it resolved. You know, one of the things that I've been coming to these the last three months, and I want to see transparency with the city, with the budgets and everything, and that's why I'm getting involved. I was involved with my union election, we lost, but we put up a good fight. We brought people to knowledge, and knowledge is power, and that's, I'm really appreciative of all the residents that are coming out, because that's what needs to happen. Because what we vote on locally will affect us the next day. What we vote on nationally doesn't affect us right away, or a state does not affect us right away. But what we vote on and what we do in the local cities will affect us quickly while we sleep, and that's why I'm involved. I'm here to endorse Frederick Sykes. I consider him a friend. He informs our neighbors. He keeps me abreast on what's going on. I know that there's a plan with another tower going up next to my son's school, and I'm going to talk to the principal of Roland Unified Little School there, Hollingsworth, and we'll talk to the teachers and to the parents, because I don't think that's right to just put these things up and, like you said, make it like oil dykes in Signal Hill with cell towers. You know, I carry one, but if I drop a call, so be it, I can call again, so it's not a big issue for me. So, I'm just here to talk to the City Council. Please consider Mr. Sykes. He's not here to divide, he's here to, you know, to respectfully give his opinion, and if it's, you know, against, just you guys come to terms and let's make the city work. It's not divide it the way they said Measure D would have. I don't think it would have. I really believe in fairness. The election, it's over, but let's move on, and we're going to have our differences, but let's work out what's best for the city, and let's do what's best for the residents. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our oral communication portion of the meeting. We're going to take the consent calendar, I think that'll go pretty quick, and then we're going to move up the item that everybody spoke on tonight, the consideration for appointment to fill the vacancy on the City Council.
Mr. Mayor.
We have the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull item number five.
Okay, we'll pull item number five.
For separate vote and consideration.
Do we have a motion to approve all the other items on the consent calendar?
Second.
Moved in second, moved by Lane, seconded by Sanderson. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. Item five, a word of bid for a financial advisor, Mr. Tuohy.
Right. I just, like I said at the meeting before, this person had been doing a lot of work for us, and I don't think that should just automatically give them the right to continue doing work, and they did some work without our authority or approval, operating under the auspice of the authority given to our city manager, and so part of the work was done, and I have questions on that. I would feel more comfortable giving someone else an opportunity like Urban Futures. They were the same price bidder, three people bid the exact same price. I just get concerned when everyone says, even though everyone else is in the exact same field, one person has a great relationship, and that's why they're supporting them with the city staff, of course, because they're the only ones that's ever worked here. So, of course, the other ones aren't going to have the same type of relationship, because they've never been given an opportunity, and I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve for the exact same bid. I want to make sure this is not more money for the exact same bid, Urban Futures.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Tuohy, seconded by Lane. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 4-0. Okay, that concludes the consent calendar. We're going to move item 15, I believe it is.
14.
14. We're going to move item 14 up next. This is the consideration of appointment to fill the vacancy of the City Council seat for the unexpired term ending November 2011. Let's start first, since there was some questions about the process. City Attorney, would you address what the City Council could do, what we did do, and how we tried to make it as fair as possible?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Yes, at your previous meeting of the City Council, it was presented to you the options that were available for the City Council to consider in terms of filling the vacancy left by the former council member Hernandez. In doing so, the Council could either call for a special election, but as indicated in the report, not only tonight, but at your last meeting, it is anticipated that that cost would be approximately $125,000. The second option is to, was to consider filling the vacancy through an appointment process. The Elections Code is quite clear, I'm sorry, the Elections and Government Code is quite clear, that that vacancy must be filled within 30 days from the date of the vacancy. At your previous City Council meeting of December 7th, the City Council directed staff to open a, for a period of time, to receive applications and take from any interested party an application which show are before you this evening. I do want to clarify something that was, a statement that was made by one of the speakers tonight, which is inaccurate. First and foremost, it wasn't just the process of coming in and signing your name. I believe before you tonight, there are 19 different applications. What was required from each of the applicants was to fill out information, and there were a series of questions on those applications for your review and consideration. So, I don't want anyone to walk away with the feeling that all you had to do is appear before the city clerk and say, "I want to sign up, and please put me on the list." There was a process which to fill out a form. Now, certainly, all they might have to do is fill out their name and address and sign the document, inasmuch as there is still the requirement under state law that whoever is appointed must be a registered voter of the city of West Covina at the time of the appointment. There was also something mentioned about no qualifications. State law does not allow qualifications other than the person to be voting age, which is 18 years, and a resident of the jurisdiction which they wish to serve. To state that you'd have to have a certain education, a certain background, or any other specific qualifications would violate state law. So, before you are all 19 applications that were submitted, and all 19 have been verified as registered voters within the city of West Covina. So, tonight before you, you have the sole discretion in the manner in which you wish to review, consider these applications, and make your appointment. With that, I'm happy to address any questions of the City Council.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilwoman Sanderson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question. There was also mention of that we should have done the process sooner. We couldn't, I understood that we couldn't do it prior to the vacancy being opened. Is that correct?
Yes, that's a very good point. A vacancy does not occur until the person who holds that seat no longer holds that seat. I believe there was a resignation document that was submitted by former council member Hernandez to the city clerk's office that was to take effect on 11/59 of December 6th, and at that point, and only at that point, could the City Council start the process of filling the vacancy.
Any other questions? Okay, first off, I'm sorry, Mr. Tuohy.
I just wanted to make some comments about some of that, but I'll wait till my turn.
Okay. First off, let me say, we want to thank everybody who applied to become a council member. Public service is a great honor. We all respect the voters of this city that elected us, and whoever is to fill this seat will also need to earn the respect of the voters. What I would like to do is propose a format that we have the city clerk read the names of each of the individuals. I'll call for nominations. Anybody up here can nominate anybody they like. After we receive nominations, I'll ask for a motion and a second on those nominations, and I believe it will take three votes, is that correct, City Attorney, to select the person? So, City Clerk, without any other questions from the Council, would you read the names of the people that applied?
And the names are listed in alphabetical order, no other type of order. First name on the list is Karen Armbrust. Did you want me to read them one at a time, or just read the whole list?
Whole list.
The whole list. Karen Armbrust, Brad Brown, Jennifer Caesar, Alan Carrico, Cesar Chavez, Lola Finley, Meta Frazier, Mercedes Gomez, Jim Ivins, Lloyd Johnson, Glenn Kennedy, Robert Kunza, Darrell Myrick, Gilbert Ramirez, Herb Redholtz, Stephen Sirnik, Rob Satello, David Stewart, Frederick Sykes.
I think there may be one misread. Caesar Cervantes, I think you said Caesar Chavez.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, you are correct. Caesar Cervantes.
Let me think there. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will ask for nominations from the City Council. Is there anyone, Mr. Tuohy, would you like to make a nomination?
I won't, one minute. I just wanted to make some brief comments.
Sure.
If that's okay. I want to thank everyone for applying. I understand it's a different process to go through, but as one of the candidates spoke saying that someone else said something that wasn't true, anything anyone says up here, you have no idea whether it's truthful or not. People put their own spin on it, and the man that was even saying that has accused us of stuff without producing the same fact, so it concerns me. You just heard how our process was violated, and that was not right. We should have had a vacancy process before the seat was vacant, which to me, doesn't seem that we should predetermine that a certain individual was going to win a seat. That seems very disingenuous with the process that they were saying you need to be open about. There was other candidates on the ballot, so that person, Councilmember Hernandez, wasn't guaranteed a seat. So, to me, to have a vacancy and to have a process to go through an appointment when there's no vacancy, to me, is absolute ridiculous, and to state that that is how this council operates, and it's wrong, you know, that to me is some of the things that go on here that concerns me when you have people talking. A lot of the different processes, I want to say we have some great candidates out here. I don't, you know, I have some that I like more than others, no question about that, but some people just talk about their highlights, and they fail to mention that it may be that some of the other people don't necessarily have been here for many years, too, and just don't necessarily brag about, and I'm not saying that's in a bad way, but I'm just saying there's many good people, and I think they have served in different capacities over the years. And I know, contrary to some of the people here, and most of you people here may not realize, but like I said, Lloyd Johnson, who's also one of the applicants, fought very hard to keep the pillowcase rapist out from being released in our city and in Covina. A lot of you don't know that, because he doesn't come down here and toot his horn and say, "I did that many years ago," when he also led the charge to fight the parole office from expanding and bringing more people into our community. So, it's easy to always say what someone did, because someone doesn't have necessarily, you know, some people have their same cheerleaders every day. "I expect you to bring cheerleaders today that support you." We have other people, you know, Glenn Kennedy, who volunteers doing the graffiti abatement program, who does a lot of stuff and volunteers his time, okay? That's, people, you know, that's a lot of work. He volunteers his time, giving up all his time to paint graffiti on weekends. "I prefer to spend time with my family." It's a tremendous sacrifice he makes for his family and behalf of our community, so he was some of the other candidates, you know, and this is very difficult. A lot of these are personal friends of ours. I can tell you right now, 18 of you are not being appointed. Okay? That's just the process. 18 are going home not satisfied, okay? We have Darrell Myrick, who's, you know, been our Assistant Police Chief here, served many years in all the different capacities, and, you know, him and his wife Roxanne's up there, I mean, that's just, they were regulars for many years through their process, as all their kids went through all the different sports leagues. I appreciate the more current ones, you know, we have Karen and Rob. Rob, I understand, Rob served longer on the different commissions than all the council members, any council member that's served up here. He's a 23, 24-year-plus commission veteran, and prior to that, he's the only person that's been president of every organization, every sports league, and everything at the high school where his kid attended. That, to me, is amazing, and you just look around, and, I mean, we can keep on going down the list. I know a lot of them, those are the ones I know the, you know, best. Herb Redholtz, there's no question, Herb comes to all of our meetings. There's no question, a lot of the stuff you have done. A lot of these, half of the people asking to be appointed are commissioners or former commissioners. Some are current elected officials. It is a good list. I'm glad these ones chose to show up. It's sad that someone put in their name and chose not to, because we're considering you when you didn't even consider to give the public the opportunity to consider you. So, that concerns me, but with this list right here, I would want to go to the next round. I would want to make a motion to, for Rob Satello.
Okay, we have a nomination for Rob Satello. Any other nominations?
Can I make a comment?
Councilwoman Lane.
I just want to say, first and foremost, I'd like to thank all the applicants. We're really, really fortunate here in West Covina, have such great applicants and people that are interested in our community, and thank you all for doing that. However, from my seat, I'd like to see the appointment be a former recent candidate. I think this shows to me a person who's willing I think this shows to me a person who's willing to put themselves out there, a person who's showed the fortitude and perseverance it takes to run for city council and run a campaign. Anybody who's ever done that knows personally what an undertaking that is, and, you know, the residual benefits are that the people that's running, or that has run in the past, has been vetted by the residents of West Covina, and they've been exposed to West Covina residents, and the people know who they are. So, those are just my comments, and...
Councilwoman Sanderson.
Thank you, Mayor Herford. I wanted to say thank you to all the applicants. We have 19 applicants, and that's really exciting for the future of West Covina, because as I went through the applicants and the names, I thought, I think our city's going to be in good hands if these people stay involved. This isn't just the first step. I mean, there's many other steps, and I hope everybody still continues to stay involved and pushes to care about their city. Honestly, I wish we had a 10-member council, because this is going to be a hard night. There's a lot of really, really good candidates here, and I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you guys so much for your time and your applications, and like Mike had said, and I'll repeat, 18 people are not getting appointed. So, you know, it makes it really, really hard. I want to answer a question that a resident asked about the fairness and the qualifications of these 19 people that applied. First of all, I think there's something that we cannot forget, and I said this at the last council meeting, and I'm going to say it again. All four of us sitting up here were elected by the majority of this community to do a job, and that's what we're here to do. So, end all result, it's our decision who fills this vacancy. Those are the voters, not only elected myself, and I thank them for doing that and putting me here to make those important decisions, but I'd like to point out, Mayor Herford has been elected five times, going on 25 years. The city appreciates and trusts this person, and I do too, and I've got to know him over the, going on 14, 13 years, I've been here. Mike, as well, has been here, going on 20 years. This'll be 20 years. These are good people. Sherry, 10 years. We didn't just get elected once, we got elected twice, and that says a lot to me. That says that the people trust us, and that's what we're here to do, is to make sure that whoever we do appoint tonight is going to be somebody that you can trust. I agree with my colleague in reference to a former recent candidate, and I know it was said, it's not a beauty pageant, but when I talked to my husband about it, he said, "Yeah, it kind of is a beauty pageant." The second runner-up in the election that Councilmember Hernandez has stepped down because he has gone on to the assembly, and that person, I believe, was 125 votes, and it wouldn't have broke her ankle, probably would be sitting up here regardless, and that person's Karen Armbrust. So, I'd like to make a nomination for Karen Armbrust, because not only has she been a friend and a great person, but I just think, bottom line is, she's going to do a good job for this community, and I believe it's for the 10 months, a 10-month period. So, with that, I just would like to put my support for her and put a nomination on the floor for that.
Okay, we have a nomination for Rob Satello, a nomination for Karen Armbrust. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing that, the nominations are closed. We'll start with Rob Satello. Do we have a motion and a second?
So, a motion to approve Rob Satello for city council?
Motion by Mike Tuohy.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilwoman Lane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Karen Armbrust, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Karen Armbrust to city council.
I'll second that. So, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Mayor.
I want to say, I greatly appreciate Rob's service, but obviously, Rob, I'm very sorry about this, and I understand it's how it is with the elections. I just think, like I said, there's a lot of good people, and I hope you, everyone who has applied considers the election in November of 2011.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Karen Armbrust has been the applicant appointed to fill the vacancy on the city council. Karen, do you want to address the council or the audience? You have the ability to be sworn in tonight if you like, otherwise, you can do it at another time at City Hall.
I'm very humble. Thank you very much. I really do appreciate it, and I feel with the support of council, of staff, and of all the residents of West Covina, I am going to do the best job I can, with the good Lord's help, and if you'd like to swear me in, I would be honored to do that tonight.
City clerk, would you swear her in? Let's wait for the photographer.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance. That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. Can I take this obligation freely? I do take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation? Without any mental reservation. For purpose of evasion? For purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully? That I will well and faithfully? Discharge the duties? Discharge the duties? Of the position upon which I am about to enter? Upon the position about? Discharge the duties of the position? Discharge the, I'm sorry, say it again? Discharge the duties of the position? Discharge the duties of the position? Upon which I am about to enter? Upon which I'm about to enter? For the city of West Covina. For the city of West Covina.
Why don't we take a brief break?